Good evening. I call this August 12, 2024, meeting of the Slovenia Board of Education to order. Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Hoffman.
Here.
Ms. Conklin.
Here.
Ms. Mabale.
Here.
Mr. Feller.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I think we're beginning with the presentation, Dr. Moll.
Yes, we are. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to have a crowd with us tonight. As you know, we are in wrapping up year two and entering into year three of our five-year strategic plan. And as we did last year and the first year that we went through our strategic plan, we like to give an annual update on how we accomplished our goals or revisited our goals, shifted them around, highlight our accomplishments. And so tonight, we are talking to our four of our directors about our year-two results, what we've accomplished this past year, in addition to what they will be focusing on during the year three of our strategic plan. Here, you'll see a brief timeline of the rollout of our strategic plan when it was board-approved in September of 2022. And tonight, we are here to provide an update. So with that, and thank you, Adam, for being our control over there. Firstly, I'm going to start out as we revisit the strategic plan, our mission statement. We educate, empower, and aspire students to reach the whole potential as lifelong contributors to a global society. And then also, we have our vision statement. Slovenia Schools will be the leading school district in Ohio in this course of five-year plan. So we have our core beliefs, and I won't read these verbatim. They are on our district website, and we do speak about these often as we focus on the different components of our plan. But we focus on the whole child authenticity, inclusivity, collaboration, community, and that's not a typo for those that are in the audience. We have an emphasis on unity, specifically 12 rooms, one house, and continuous improvement. So tonight, we are going to have some feedback in regards to our accomplishments and the advances that we've been able to make, maybe add some readjustments. And we will start with these five domains. We have teaching and learning and innovation, social, emotional, mental well-being of students, culture, climate, and communication, facilities, that's for current use and future planning, and also physical planning and responsibility. So we will hear from each of our directors. I ask that you take about five, no more than seven minutes, to share the highlights of your slides. So with that, first, we have teaching, learning, and innovation. So we have our directors here. We have Melissa as well as Andrea. Thank you.
Okay. We want to start by reviewing our subgoals. We have four. Develop a teaching and learning framework for students and staff based on the model of continuous improvement, explore and implement innovative programs, curriculum and strategies that create opportunities for students to be globally competent, future-ready, college workforce, military, create a consistent, equitable, and student-centered environment across all Slovenia schools. And then that fourth one, create a multi-tiered system of support with that acronym FTSS. So when we go through this and we look at where we have been and where we're going, that first sub-goal, that's develop a teaching and learning framework, we look at what the framework includes, and really, that's our professional development structure as one part of this sub-goal. So when we talk about the various data points, we look again at that whole child approach. So we talk about academic data points that we have professional development on. We have social, emotional data points. We have all of these different sources where, when we have professional development time, we come together as groups and we review those. So that framework provides the opportunity for us to do these with different groups getting together. We have state testing data listed there as well, because we know that's an important data point, not the only data point, but it's an important one. Which is a nice segue into that development, teaching, and learning framework. That established process for reviewing data, the big part of that was really formalizing the process to look at data to drive instruction. Some of the examples of what we did to formalize the process this past year, we have different groups that are meeting regularly. Our directors meet regularly. We have groups of principals. We have assistant principals. We go to intervention assistance teams. We have teacher-based teams. Those could be grade level or they could be departments. But formalizing that process has allowed those groups to have set times in which they meet, and then they can look at whatever data is important to them at that point. And I think that was one thing that this subgroup wanted to stress, is that data isn't just one thing. We could talk about any number of different sources of information, and very often, we have the groups that are meeting deciding what source of information is the most relevant and the most important for that point in time. That technology, when we talk about technology along with that framework, that's really the tool or the resource that we're using in order to view the data. One series of professional development opportunities that we offered last year involve one view, the automation for preschool, intermediate board training, and then ad hoc training as requested, and that's really an ongoing. So when we talk about where we've gone and where we're going, those lead from one year into the next, and we try to be responsive as a system, as responsive as we can be for where we're seeing the need. And I know that is one thing that we stressed last year, and another thing that will continue this year, is really trying to solicit input. What is it that we need to be focusing on? And then designating that time in order to do that. So that's that framework that we're providing there. And jumping ahead a little bit, when we talk about the framework, we do talk about that multi-tiered system of support. It's one of our last slides since that's our fourth subgroup. But implementing a framework like that really allows us to have a set process where we are, again, looking at the whole child, and we're focusing on the needs of whatever it is that group of students, whatever age group, whatever grade level, but really, what it is we are deciding is a priority at that point in time. Our second sub-goal is that explore and implement innovative programs.
So this one, we focused on things that we have occurred that we're working on to make things more innovative, that we've never done before. We explored, we did so much research in the past two years. This year, Cheryl and I, and along with Laura Waite, visited Anthony Wayne Waterville Primary, which is a STEM-designated school. We looked at what they didn't need to have that, how they were designated as a STEM school. So we took that back and talked to our schools and our principals about what they have that's ongoing, that mimics what they're doing, such as our praries, things like that. That was their first step. Continuing our intermediate transition from the smart boards, that's something that our teachers really enjoyed this year, having more innovations with our programs, from going from smart board notebook to the intermediate. I know Cheryl attended the Create Conference focused on artificial intelligence in the classroom. We continue to explore AI resources such as iReady, which connected our personalized instruction that also met the high-quality student materials and high-quality student data, which are Ohio revised code now for and within elementary. And then this past June, we attended the STEM CINC conference. This was an amazing conference in Indian Hill Exams Village outside of Cincinnati, where they created a STEM culture and framework with their school, which was something that, very similar to like PBIS in terms of STEM. So that's something that the group, the committee, which consisted of Laura Waite, Nicole Miller, computer science teacher at, computer teacher at McCord, and Peter Knack Geiser from Arbuthills. So we, as a committee, looked at their framework, and we are, we will be showing you that presentation hopefully in September and October to talk about everything that we learned and how they've embedded a culture of STEM learning across content, across frameworks. And with part of that strategic framework, what was really important to us, and this is something that we've been working really hard on, is consistent, equitable environments all across our 12 buildings. So we established the procedures for the science of reading, pre-pay in 12. We designed a elementary teaching and learning website. That's where all our teachers have a help they can go to in terms of they need a RIT template, they need to know about materials, what are we using? So that we have a place where all teachers, regardless, K in elementary, K5, in all seven buildings, have a one-stop shop to find their resources. We implemented our, with our new high walls, I will say, this is my fourth September, and we've had about five or five new laws in early childhood alone in the K3 band with phonics, dyslexia, high-quality student data, personalized instruction, science of reading, phonics law, they're all there. So there's a law for everything now that we're doing. So we've been, we've had a lot of compliance, but with that, we always want, as Andrea mentioned earlier, that balance of making sure that we're meeting the law, meeting the needs of our students and the unique needs of our students along with what our teachers need to support this transition for them as well. And with that being said, this year, we had our visit from Governor July, who visited our Stranahan classrooms, where we, he was able to visit those laws in action, those curriculum mandates from foundations with our phonics and dyslexia law and the science of reading. So he was able to see the pilot of the wisdom implementation, the program that we're adopting this year. So again, I think that's another way of proving that Slovenia Schools is leading the science of reading pathway in northwest Ohio. So that was really, it was a great showcase of our teachers and their hard work. And we continue to partner with our Toledo Public Schools library, sorry. Again, with that, with personalized instruction and also future-ready, we implemented iReady. This is our second year going into iReady in terms of personalized instruction and innovation, where students have individualized learning for, with artificial intelligence. We expanded STEM lessons across the year with PBL projects, so all teachers had access to STEM-embedded lessons. Again, with the STEM Academy Conference that we attended, we want to bring that knowledge back to our district to talk about how we can emphasize a true STEM culture, whatever grade level, whatever content you're doing. This year, actually Friday, which is our Teacher Professional Learning Day, our gym teachers, our physical education teachers will be involved in a STEM and PE workshop, which talks about how to embed physical education standards with STEM projects that we currently have in our district. So that's one way. We are also expanding our gifted services to per-grade families while we're here. Okay, so then, we're busy in teaching and learning. And we're a great group of people because we all work really hard together. So not just secondary, but our intervention department with Laura Waite, with Melissa McDonald, and with Julie Sanford as our data director. So this is something that we worked hard in every avenue to bring together for those consistent, equitable framework instructions in our district K1.
And a big part about it is making sure that we have everybody at the table, and that's that equitable piece. So not just pockets of conversation, but we've been very deliberate last year and will be more deliberate this year about making sure, again, that we have set aside time to have everybody who contributes to the conversation at the table. So when we have other departments, I listed some of them in that list right there. It's not all inclusive, but when we're looking at that consistent framework, and we have these regular department meetings, these are across the district. So we have a set time and we have a set place for, for instance, all junior high English teachers to meet together to make sure that we're looking at pacing and we're talking about maps. And one thing that, I'm just going to add a quick blurb about, pretty excited about this, is English, the next less bullet up there. But we did look at what kind of programs we're using and what resources we have and vocabulary. Now, vocabulary support instruction is, was a need that came out of the three junior high buildings, and it was determined among the three junior high buildings that something consistent was really needed and really valued. The high schools were both using a certain program, and now the junior highs will be adopting that as well. So among all five secondary buildings, we will all be using the same vocabulary resource in order to provide support that instruction. So that's an example of that consistent, equitable support that we're providing at the secondary level. Now, and this, it transcends all disciplines. This is really, I know I have it, it's a couple, but when we talk about that support and we talk about that professional development, we've been really excited to have, for instance, our intervention specialists, the department chairs, meeting with content-specifics. So when the English department meets, we have intervention specialists that are there, EL support, we want to make sure that we have those folks at the table. So we're all aware of what is happening, and we're all working to move in the same direction so that we can all provide the same support at the same quality and the same level for all students. And the very last of our four sub-goals, the multi-tiered system of support, this is the best of the last. So what we did this past year, when we're talking about the multi-tiered system of support, really, that is a framework that supports, again, the whole child. So it's not focused on one thing or another. It's really whatever the student needs. So that incorporates things like our positive behavior intervention and support for the social, emotional piece. It could be an academic focus. But what this does is it allows us as a district, all 12 buildings, to be having conversations with a consistent vocabulary where everybody understands better what that framework looks like, so that we can then transition through one year to the next and help support students in a smooth transition. So this past year, we did a book study with administrators. The book, the picture of the book is up there. But we started with directors, and then we expanded. And our entire administrative team actually read that book and participated in a book study. We had visits where we had principals from one building go and visit another building, and we really, to observe meetings in progress, to really get a good idea of the great things that are happening across the district, and maybe get some ideas for what we want to implement moving forward. So these are the things that we've done. We had, President Margaret Sier will come in in June at our end-of-year retreat last year, and she was so popular, we have her back to begin this year with the admin retreat in August that we just had a couple weeks ago. But what has come out of that series of conversations are, we have building plans that have been drafted. So every single one of our buildings has a plan in place that we're looking at for this school year, how we're going to really hammer down on our committees and our conversations and really focus those to make sure that we are having the most important conversations in a very structured fashion to allow for the best results. So that's our now what out of teaching, learning, and innovation.
We're really bored. We don't even have lunch to eat. Any questions or anything?
Laura's excellent. Thank you.
That looks great. Very thorough.
Thank you, ladies. So next, we have social, emotional, mental well-being of students. That's what you need, Mr. Zeroff.
You want to do that?
Ms. McDonald.
Sure.
The Harbor Boys team back in.
Yeah, so I do want to go back to the Teaching and Learning Initiative book. September 9th, they do plan those individuals who went to the STEM CINC professional development. That presentation will be in the board. It's planned for September 9th. We didn't want to overwhelm with two presentations today. But from the social, emotional, mental well-being, this is just, I like to recognize our team members. It's a great team, great group of individuals. We've got a lot of work done, still a lot of work left to do as we continue to move forward. I'm not going to read all of them, but you know, with it being social, emotional, we have a lot of counselors, school sites, and our social workers are obviously a part of that. Dan and Jill, I see you two sitting here today. If you guys do want to chime in, feel free to do so, as well as Melissa and Eric are going to handle the majority of this presentation. So we had five sub-goals. Curriculum, roles, and responsibilities, job descriptions, student wellness and staff wellness. Starting with our curriculum sub-goal, we accomplished back in the 22, 23 school year, we implemented an electronic version of the second step. It's a social, emotional curriculum for grades K through 5. Works really well. It's more feasible in the elementary level, just with counselors who can step in and focus on that curriculum with our teachers in grades K through 5. We did have the goal going into last year to implement the second step curriculum for grades 6 through 8. Not as easy with the rotation of classes and put a lot on teachers and just to be blunt and transparent with everyone, we about a year ago, you know, realized we were violating the contract with expecting teachers to take on essentially another prep. So that didn't happen. It's part of the strategic plan. Some goals get accomplished, some don't. Didn't happen last year, but we are looking to evaluate how we can accomplish that, have those discussions that are being this year on how we can accomplish that second step curriculum for junior high going into next school year. We have to be a little more creative compared to how it's done in the elementary, but it's something we did, we plan on doing this year. And then the social, emotional curriculum is still being developed for grades 9 through 12. Our ultimate goal when we started this process for the curriculum sub-goal was to have some form of curriculum in all of our buildings, grades K through 12, by the end of the 2027 school year. Job descriptions, roles, and responsibilities, again, this is a focus mostly with counselors because they're taking on a lot of this work, as well as our social workers. So as you're probably well aware, a social worker was hired to start last school year. Our social workers have been great, and I hopefully that's reflected and based on the feedback I've received in buildings, that they've been beneficial to, again, the mental health and well-being of our students and adding the additional support that's needed. We did implement high school AP testing, a process that took that process in the high school off the counselors, and we have our student data assessment director taking on a lot of that role with our teaching and learning assistant principals at the high schools. So again, counselors can focus more on the social, emotional piece. Again, with counselors, 504 protocols have been reestablished going into this year. That's falling again more on building administration. And I know Josh established this a few years ago, and we've gotten better with our subs. You probably see him on every board agenda. We substitute teachers are starting, continuing to grow in our district, but when we did have enough subs in the building, we've lowered on the list where counselors have to go in and fill classrooms, just again, so they can focus on our goals for the strategic plan. Josh, I think he's going to talk about this a little bit with all job descriptions, but we're going to ring him in a little more closely in this upcoming school year as we really want to focus and dive into roles and responsibilities and the job descriptions for our counselors. Those are between nonexistent and very, very, very right now, and we really want to tighten that up for them going into this school year. Staff wellness, that staff wellness committee continues to be led by HR. I know we implemented, or re-implemented that post-COVID a couple of years ago. Something HR's taken on is they've established building wellness coordinators that it's a little more autonomous, where they're kind of doing, instead of a whole district-wide process, they're able to focus on potentially the needs and I guess the wants on what their buildings want to do. So those building wellness coordinators work with their staffs in their buildings. They do meet with Josh monthly on how that process is going, what can be changed or modified, or things that may be running well that they want to continue with. And again, for this school year, we will continue to offer mental health and wellness. Can you go back to that? Thank you. Mental health and wellness options, as well as building wellness activities for staff.
I expect.
I did have them memorized, but I thought it was kind of recent. This last one, and I don't want to say, well, I am going to say it. I think this is probably our most important goal, and I know I said that the last couple of years. I'm not taking anything away from staff wellness or curriculum or roles and responsibility, but obviously, this, you know, committee was formed to focus on our student wellness and what we can do to, again, have an impact on their social, emotional, and mental well-being in our classrooms every day. We continued, we started this two years ago. We're in year three with a partnership with Dr. Brandon Wood from the University of Toledo. I know you guys have heard, we talked about him before. We funded him through a grant that we applied for and received a while back called Stronger Connections. So it's nice to use that funding. It's not coming out of our general fund to partner with him. He's been very, very beneficial for essentially our student screenings. That was one of our goal last year's, we wanted, last year, we wanted to do a surveillance screening, and Melissa's going to get into the abnormal screening compared to a surveillance screening. But last year, we did surveillance screen our freshmen in both high schools. We did that in February. A surveillance screening is basically, you screen students. It was about a five or six-question survey, and those students who were in immediate need, we had all hands on deck in both high schools to address those students. We screened 484 freshmen. We did have a passive opt-out for parents. Parents were well aware of the survey questions that were asked. Thirty-four out of those, 34 students were opted out of that freshman class. I think one positive, and Dr. Wood focused on this, and again, I want to commend our counselors and our social worker and our psychologist, because we had all hands on deck in both high schools. We obviously did them on different days, but we were expecting anywhere from 8% to 14%, I think was that number, when he has done these surveillance screenings in other districts. Only 20 between both high schools, which was 4.1% of our students, indicated they had an immediate need for help and support. So he said it and I'll reiterate, it says a lot about what our counselors, our teachers, our staff are doing to give students an opportunity to go to them if they're dealing with day-to-day issues. So it says a lot about our district. Even though we had 20, it was good to connect with those 20s. Our counselors are separated by alphabet, and if a kid had a need and they fell off the ladder and this counselor's like, I got them, they went, you know, took that student, met with them, helped them work with you, and they worked through those issues. And we even had one that stands out. We had a student that said, you know, I'm not in any immediate need. My parents got in a really, really bad argument last night, and they're not getting along, and I just need to talk to somebody. Counselor at that building said, that's my student, I'll go get him or her, and they addressed her right away. So it was good to, it was good to connect with those students on that day, even though it was 20. It was 20 kids who we were able to, again, connect with and address the needs they had. And I said already, all hands were on deck from, again, counselors, psychs, administration. So we're thankful for both those high schools. One of the issues, and you've probably heard me talk about this before, and Melissa's going to talk about it because she's the one that worked with our social workers on it, was we didn't have a great response plan. Besides, and I've said it here, at least we were letting the parents know, hey, your son or daughter had a survey today, you are aware of this survey, they have some immediate need. We didn't have a ton of resources besides trying to put more on a counselor or a psych who may not always be trained in all of those things, but our social workers did a really good job. And I'm just going to pass out a copy of this. This is just some mental health resources in the area that they focused on, and I'll turn that over to you for the response plan.
Sure. So just to piggyback on what Mr. Zeroff was saying, with the surveillance screener, it did not identify any of the students. So it just gave us some data on where students were overall on a depression and anxiety scale. The 20 students who indicated they were in need of immediate help at the end of the survey, it did say, if you feel like you are in need of immediate assistance, you could say yes, and then it would ask for that student's name. So we were only able to identify those 20 students that took the survey. So that's kind of the difference between a surveillance screener and then a for-real screener. It would identify all the students and give us a rating scale on both depression and anxiety. So in working with Dr. Wood, with our committee, and then working individually with Northview and Southview with their response teams, which included counselors, administration, and social workers, along with Tim and I and Dr. Wood, it was a concern of, are we going to have enough people available? If we're, you know, we have 14% of our sophomore class indicating they need immediate assistance. Are we going to have enough people there that day? The other concern was, does the community know that we're doing this? And are there enough resources available to refer families to? I think everyone in this room knows, a lot of times, when it comes to mental health, there can be a three to six-month waiting list. So that was a concern of ours as well. So I would like to give a lot of credit to both of our social workers. They spent a lot of time reaching out to local mental health resources to see what they were able to provide, along with what medical insurance they accepted. And even some of the resources were able to give us an estimated wait time. So that is what is in the staple packet that we received. This is also now available on the district website under the social worker tab as well for community members that may need to get connected to resources. And then the additional flyers, we do partner with our SPO Health as a district, and we do have the Tackle Program in several of our buildings. So if a student is already connected to a Tackle case manager or therapist in our building, they were also a part of that response team on the day of. So if they were already a part of that program, they would speak with that case manager and/or therapist. And then the social workers also worked with Harbor Mental Health, also now has a urgent care specifically for mental health. So we have that flyer available, and they were made aware of the dates of our surveillance screener so that if we were going to have families coming in in need of immediate assistance, they were well aware. And they have also been working with MRSS, which is able to, it's through the ZEP Center, and they are able to, if a student is in crisis, they have a mobile response team. and they are able to, if a student is in crisis, they have a mobile response team so they can come to the building with that permission to work with a student if you had someone in crisis. So they were also aware that we were doing the surveillance screener that day in case we had anyone at that level of need. Fortunately, we did not. I feel, if anything, we're over-prepared, but I would take that any day over being under-prepared. So things went really well. Kudos to both high schools and our, our social workers that did a tremendous job preparing.
And we do have things lined up, again, for our goals for this year. We're gonna, we're gonna do another surveillance screening for our ninth graders, and then we're gonna do the, we try to find the right term for this, but the whole screening for our 10th graders who have already gone through the surveillance screening. So, you know, the ultimate goal moving forward is to, through our screening process, to, you know, help identify those students who are in social emotional health and address those as, as across our desk. But again, going back to that lower percentage, I know our staff is doing that every day in any class they go into, but it's just another, like, this is another step to be proactive through the screening process to try to address those students' needs, so. One last thing, and I know it's been brought up with the governor and some of the issues, and I think it falls right in this, and I didn't add it, but cell phones in our, in our, in our school districts. And, you know, you look, look across other school districts and cities, I'll take Los Angeles, public schools, they've done a complete ban on our, on cell phones. I do want to, and we'll get into this this year, but I do want to address it with our committee on the impact that cell phones can be having. I know we've probably seen a lot of communication from teachers throughout the district, and I think it's something that falls right in our social emotional and mental health of our students. Cell phone policy is a little bit different between, a lot different between the high school and our, and our elementary and junior high, but we do plan to dive into that this year to, to see a potential proposal or things that we may see from a committee that maybe recommend for some potential policy moving forward with cell phones. So that's all we have, unless there are any questions for either of us or any of us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We have culture, climate and communication. We'll be brief, we only had really two sub-goals with ours, but the idea really is just to improve communication. And as a default, climate and culture should improve. And so what I'm thinking of when we were putting this together, it's almost like, I'm thinking about restaurants, there's front-house staff and back-house staff, right? So Amy's going to talk about the front-house staff, and that's going to be the communication that we've kind of gone out to our stakeholders in terms of the community and other kind of roles. I'm more of a back-house staff, I'm in the weeds, just trying to clean processes up so that we can really define roles and responsibilities a little bit better. So any with that to start?
All right. On this slide, we noted a lot of what's happening in communication, and I know this is a year or two update. It doesn't mean all of this is new, but the key to this slide is that it's continuous improvement. So what we're doing is we're getting better at the planning logistics topics in sessions. Of course, J-Pop, the superintendent coffees, employee forums. We already have our superintendent coffees scheduled for the whole year, so we can get those out to the community earlier, instead of planning them as we go throughout the year. The employee forum last year, we took it up a level and did the digital respond to the survey as you're here, so we get the immediate feedback. And so we're just continuing to improve these, these items. The district digest, continue to dive into what's happening in the district, but I think we're going deeper into what's happening. And we're always talking about collective pride, the twelve rooms, one house. Our Salina is key to, it's like threads through everything we do. Everything is about our district, not one specific building, how one outshines others. This is about our district. Coming up this year, actually this fall, we were kind of rolling out a district communications one-pager, kind of like a cheat sheet for families, to explain the district app, Stop Finder, My School Books, when our board meetings and, you know, how do you participate? Things that families just might want to know at a high level. And then for our administrators, a communications resource, more about how they're communicating with families and some, I'd say tips and tricks. They do it really well, but some of them do it very differently. I'd like to get it all into one spot as a resource for our administrators. As far as email communication, digital newsletters, website, just work out, things like that.
We didn't really have a lot of committee work last year doing this. It really was more of Amy and I and Dawn just kind of chipping away at actual steps. One thing I didn't put out here that I should have is one of the goals for this year is to reconvene that committee back together, to basically ask, how are we doing? Where are we, you know, where have we improved? Where are we lacking? How can we continue to be better communicators as a district to all of those stakeholders? So I just had a few highlights of what we've done in the weeds a little bit. And one of the things that we've tried to do is to continue to improve onboarding for our new employees. Today was actually day one of new teacher orientation. Tomorrow will be day two. I think we have 35 or 36 of those folks there. So we'll, we'll have them tomorrow. Laura Lowe has done a nice job with our, with our special education and support staff, where we've actually brought them in earlier than new teacher orientation to kind of onboard them to make sure that that mind of communication is there with their roles and responsibilities and how that works at such a unique area. One of the goals for next year would be to continue to add training for our paraprofessionals, our specialized paraprofessionals, and continue that throughout the year. And then we had, started briefly a new teacher heading last year. I still want to look to ways to improve that and continue that going so that we can onboard teachers all the way through year one with them. So I'm still going to explore that avenue. I want to figure out a way that we can do it and reach more people so that they're just better prepared for our kids. Job descriptions, Tim mentioned this a little, a while ago, so it is kind of paired with social emotional and mental well-being. And that really is defining roles and responsibilities. So we know where everyone is and what they should be doing, and who does what, who's responsible for what. Once we can clean that up and communicate that out, I think that just helps the entire staff out in terms of who does what, who they should be calling when they needed something. We did a portion of the admin team last year. The goal of this year would be to have the complete administrative teams, job descriptions done by the end of this school year. Again, we're brief, we just had those two subgroups. Any questions for us?
Thank you.
That's just a goal, I should say. Thank you.
So I believe we have grades for facilities?
All right. So our last update that I gave you, we were in the process of putting PM plans into action. That's our, you know, keeping everything clean, updated and everything else. We actually completed our first year of PMs in the fall and the summer of all of our HVAC systems and compressors and everything else. It's really showing, showing to save us money. The year before, we had 24 compressors and motors fail in our HVAC units. For this past year, we only had seven. So it's quite a, quite a decrease in, in our failures. Just to give you an idea, if a motor fails, we're looking between $8,000 and $9,000 that anyone put in. If a compressor fails, we're looking at around $17,000. So it's significant savings of what we've done. Also with that, and it's on down in my slide, but I now have four guys trained on HVAC and putting in compressors, motors, all of that, so we no longer have to outsource that to a company. So we can buy that motor now for about $600 and put it in ourselves, which is the cost of the labor. So it's saving us significant money, and the guys will love doing it as well. All of our grounds equipment, we now have a season-ending PM on it, always before. We would do it before the season happened. So then what, what we find, and that's like all of our mowers and snow blowers and stuff all comes back from these pools. And we would find if they would come back, we'd put them in storage, and then it'd be time to use them again the next year, we'd go fire them up, everything would be not working, broken. So now we have the process of when they come in, we immediately do the PMs on them. We find out what's wrong, we have time to repair them, and then when, when they go back out, they're ready to go at that point in time. So another thing we're doing there. The pool, everyone knows what fun the pool was this year. Gave me a little less hair. But, so the pool this year, we have completed the install of the new HVAC and ventilation system. Working wonderful. We actually had our guys work with a gentleman from Canada and came down and trained them on the whole system. It's a very complicated system. Everything runs through phone lines and connections and, and it's all digital. So it was great that our guys got to learn that, because now we don't have to pay for the service going on unless it's something major. So they can go in, they can set it up, they can change settings and everything like that. So that was done. We removed all the old rust items in the pool area, painted the Empire Pool, the ceiling's all painted new, refurbished the lockers in the locker rooms, installed LED lighting, so that's going to save us money in the LED lighting. We have, I think there's 11 or 12 lights now compared to probably over 40 or 50 was in there before, and it's even brighter. So, so that's a good thing. We, I have in there, continue our five-year plan for the parking lots and painting the classrooms. We actually moved that this year. Oh, it just blew this up. We moved that this year and did not complete it due to the money that we were putting into the pool area. We just kind of had to move those funds over into the pool, and we plan on getting back on those next year. Adam and I just actually spoke this morning about a couple of parking lots for this year that I want to fully pay so we can get back on track with our parking lots and our painting. Providing the team with more training to help us save and using contractors. As I said, I've said to the guys, we had a lot of training this year, and they're loving everything that they do. They love doing the work themselves, they're taking pride in it. And, you know, if we need to get a company out, we'll get a company out, but if we can do it ourselves, that's what we're going to do. Changed kind of Chris White's role as a supervisor. I have Chris doing more mentoring and training right now. Chris has a vast amount of knowledge on everything from over the years. So Chris is actually able to go out and work with the guys now, train them on certain aspects. And, you know, that, that's saving us a lot of bringing in contractors as well. So I thank him for that. If you see him around the district, he's probably out in the field somewhere with one of the guys and, you know, elbows deep into something. So he's been a very valuable asset and saving, saving the district a lot of money. We're starting to upgrade the buildings to LEDs. So as lights are going out, as sections of lights are starting to go out, we're upgrading to LEDs. You notice cam, the little cam lights that are in all of our buildings, they have drivers on the bulbs. So it's about $135 for a bulb. We can change that over to an LED and save energy for $60. So as those are going out, we're switching them over to that area to LED to help save on our electric bills, as well as it's just cheaper to do and it looks better, brighter lighting. So we've upgraded the gym at Northview to all LED there. Southview is coming this year. We had plans to do it last year, but we'll kind of ate everything up. So if that will be happening this year, we'll be converting Southview over to LED. And we hope to complete the junior high gyms as well this year. We'll see how the year goes. So we may get all the junior highs done, we may only get one or two done, but we will have them completed at least in the next two years, all the gyms and junior highs. Working with the collaborative, the plans to complete the, all the athletic department goal facilities before the football seasons. We're almost complete there. Southview, I know you guys probably already have updated on this, but Southview just needs the top surface on the track and the striping, that'll be completed. Northview, we started pouring concrete today, so all under the leakers is now concrete. Should be done with concrete work probably in the next few days. And hopefully we're ready to roll for, you know, beginning of football season. So that's what I have. Does anybody have any questions on facilities?
Thank you.
Thank you. Exciting stuff there.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you so much. And last but not least, I did have a picture of our, it's a treasurer, but apparently someone else has controls of the, powerfully.
I have access to edit.
There was a mugshot there, I promise you, there was, but anyway.
So with me coming on, coming in the, at the end of the strategic plan process with, with all you guys, I got a kind of a late start. And now that I've got two years under my belt, we're, we're getting ramped up. We met late July, early August, I think it was actually July 30th. So one of those dates there. We have five community members, two board members, both union presidents. Julie Sanford, who does a lot with grant funding and things upstairs on the second floor with us, and then myself. So we're, we're getting the ball rolling. Obviously, our goal is to, to be fiscally responsible and, and obviously support the initiatives that everyone talked about today. So we're, we're excited about this process. We're going to get, get started again in September with another meeting and then find all the ways that we can support our students and staff at Salina.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our presentation. I want to say thank you to our administrative team and those that are here that didn't speak, which had, they had a significant contribution. Jamie Wolfert, Laura Lowe and Dawn Watson, thank you for being here tonight. I also want to send out a very special thank you to our educators, support staff members that have also been a part of helping us accomplish our goals and focus on our priorities for the district. We all know that a strategic plan is a roadmap, a GPS, if you will, but not only giving you a direction of where we want to go, but also demonstrates where we've been. And I am proud of the work that our team and our educators have worked together and our support staff have worked together to accomplish. And we have accomplished a lot in two years. And I'm very proud of our folks being able to come together and work together to make that happen. But yet, we still have a lot more to accomplish over the next three years, and we will continue to work with one another in a way to make sure that we continue to apply our specific results. So with that, we're going to continue to work on our strategic plan and bring those goals to fruition. And that's the end of our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. We are now on the portion of our agenda for public participation for items that are on the agenda. And we have Dan Greenberg. Dan, I'm sure you know the rules, but state your name, address in three minutes.
Lost the voice, we're trying to get back to the first day here. Dan Greenberg, 46th and Florisburg Drive, in Salina. And I'm going to be on behalf of the S.L.A. Education Association tonight in regards to the first reading of the policy about graduation requirements. I just want to give you some perspective in terms of where we are as an association, where our, our teachers are, many of whom are here today, particularly our physical education teachers, as they're concerned about the policy about PE waivers. I know there's been some discussion we had over the last couple of years regarding PE waivers, and it's been ongoing, and some appreciating the dialogue that has been there. It's always been our intent going into this school year to continue that discussion, to look at the things that we see as critical to be done, to understand, so we can continue to have that discussion with you all. And as, as I sat down last week and with, last week with the SEA officers, we looked at what our goals were, one of our goals for the year was to dive into this, the PE waiver recognizing the impact that it has. And so understanding that you all have been continuing to do regular meetings as you do every other week and how things have gone with your meeting schedule that is on here, this is the time that you put it on the, the agenda. For us in SEA, though, it's this piece of coming back to school and seeing this on the agenda. And for us, it's been kind of in a space of not, meaning there's been a lot, there's been downtime since school was out in May in terms of being engaged in this kind of stuff. And so it is coming kind of, I know we've had the discussion, but it's coming from a space that kind of left the field for us to be, like, starting the school year. And as we're thinking about all the things that go into setting up our classes and being prepared for the school year, for this waiting piece to be out there. And so today, really the request is just a consideration, we know that it's a first read, and we know that as the first read goes, typically two weeks later, when you meet again, that's when the second read and the vote on the policy happens. And we were just hoping for something to be done in terms of postponing that first read. so that we can have a little more dialogue on the subject and continue to make sure that we have discussed it from all aspects and all voices have been heard on it. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Dan. I hope your voice improves. Okay, that takes us to you, Dr. Motley.
Thank you so much. Good evening once again, everyone. I recommend item four point one, independent contractor agreement. This agreement is for Mr. Trail to serve as an independent contractor for our district. I do want to note that his hours have been reduced from eight hours per month to five hours per month as he works to support different students and parents across the district.
I'll move approval. Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Adam, please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item four point two, which entails several agreements with the Midwest Regional Educational Service Center to provide supports for the vision impaired services for a number of our students with disabilities.
I'll move approval. Second.
Comments or questions? Adam, please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item four point three, a service agreement with IEM foundation list, again for the service support of students with special needs.
I'll move approval. Second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to recommend item four point four, an agreement for services provided with the Northwest Ohio Educational Service Center for providing services for hearing impaired classroom supports for students with disabilities.
I'll move approval. Second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item four point five, a policy revision for a first read, which would be the graduation requirements as noted.
I'll move.
I'll second.
We don't call it out.
There's no action, so you guys can. Never mind that.
It's just discussion.
Anyone have any comments or questions?
I guess my, I mean, the policy's out here for a first read, so I feel like that sort of horses out of the gate and it's fine to leave it if we need to maybe postpone the second read for an extra week or an extra meeting to allow people time to comment and bring us their concerns about the policy. I would be in favor for that. I don't know if there's any requirement that it gets passed within two weeks or something, you know? I mean, it's just a thought, take a little bit more time.
Yeah, I don't think there's a requirement. I think it's more like this is our opportunity, like, do we want to tweak anything? Do we want to change anything? And then that happens in between and then it comes back and change. So I'm not sure that we can say that now. We're not getting this feedback that may be coming from, you know, PE teachers or whatever. So, but, I mean, I don't think just because we do a first read right now that, I mean, I think we still have time. We could go back and at the second read, we could say, hey, we could still tweak things or change things or whatever, or not pass it, send it back to the policy committee, send it back to the policy committee or.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we did with the recently.
Yeah, we've done it lots.
Where we read it first, we make a bunch of changes, we send it back for a second read with changes, so.
Yeah, and I think on this one, you know, we've had presentations on it, we have talked about it. Was the winner.
Actually, it was, yeah, by two years.
It was two years ago. Yeah, we've talked about it.
I would like to share, Tim does have some details as far as what we have, just not saying or pushback, but just for the education for everyone in the room to hear some of the steps that we have taken to make sure everyone's aware. And I think Andrea may have some cosign in there too.
She may have more specifics beginning last year, but I know we met in January with phys ed teachers as well as Greg and with Tim, you were there as well. And then Andrea and I did talk a lot with phys ed teachers and building principals in March of last year as well. Andrea, I think you may have communication as well prior to that.
Yeah, we, the specific meetings where we met as a group to discuss that, January, we had discussion here, we met actually a couple times in January and then we met again in March to discuss it.
That's what I had to say, sorry.
When you say met, you mean like with PE teachers?
Yes.
With VA leaders?
Yes.
Okay, and you're saying like you were there?
We were, we were one.
I was at meetings about two years ago, but not recently.
If you were the one in January.
When you're saying January, you mean twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty-four, yes.
Not all PE teachers were invited to that, though. I was not there.
And just to kind of echo what Kim said, you know, the first read is kind of get it out there, you know, discuss it. If there are concerns or suggestions on how to tweak it, for me, I'm all ears and willing to listen. So I would just, you know, suggest SCA kind of maybe get thoughts together and if there's suggestions or, you know, send them our way and I think we're all willing to consider. But this is just a first read to kind of get it out there and start talking about it?
I mean, I think.
That's the purpose of a first read.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think. And I think Kim addressed this, that school is just starting and going back. It's like the beginning of the year, as it is for most of you moving kids to college. And so maybe it's not in two weeks that we're doing the second read because you're just back to school. If I heard correctly, that's really, you're asking us to pause for a minute, you know, and maybe, so maybe that's it, like we push it to our September meeting or something, you know, to give time for feedback.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, and I think it falls within the time limit. Our course of study for twenty-five, twenty-six won't be ordered until November, one of those two meetings in November. We obviously want to have that course of study approved that would have this waiver in it if we chose to move forward with it prior to our April scheduling show after, towards the end of the number or early December.
What was the course of study that we passed last February?
That was a course of study going prior to scheduling the last year.
Because that had.
That did have.
The concept of this waiver, if it was going to go into.
Yes.
Okay, so if I'm understanding correctly, then we are continuing with the first read today, but we're going to move the second read to the first meeting in September? Does that sound like we're all the same age?
Dan, does that give SCA enough time to comment?
I think it helps. I'm going to back, I don't want to answer everybody now, but it definitely helps. So thank you for that consideration. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. All righty, I would like to recommend item four point six. This is. Yeah, I was told. This is an annual item, which is the approval of our school bus stops for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This particular item, the recommendation also authorizes myself or my desk, Jim back there, to make any necessary changes or declare students impractical to transport. This also resolves that our school district will doesn't make great links bio-medical and reliable medical services as medical facilities for pre-employment, reasonable suspicion and random drug testing and alcohol testing for this school year. I'll move, Julie.
I'll second.
We got it.
Okay, so move. Do the motion.
Okay. So Jim, I have to ask, because I ask every year for those that are ones lacking, I mean, I want to give you the background, that many years ago, I got a call and there was a student, so a high school student, was standing in the driveway of a registered sex offender's house at, you know, six-thirty in the morning, six-fifteen, and it was very disturbing to me because it's dark and she's alone. And so now every year, I ask, do you check that? Are you making sure none of our stops are at sex offenders' homes?
We check it quarterly. We did check it before the initial list. Along with that, we're on the automated email list. And every time we have a concerned area, we actually put it on our routing computer. It's in red because we have three routers. So everything in red, they can't route. So we kind of take care of that.
Okay, I appreciate it. So. So Jen, I read. I moved. That was their second.
Yeah.
Okay. I said, I read all of these on the internet. All of them. Yeah. But I'm wondering, why at the end do they so spread out? The ones that don't actually, just use afternoon, like it drove me nuts.
Yeah, they just write in the afternoon or morning.
There's like a big two on page and then it's just the way the program spits it out?
Yeah, yeah. It's the entire list.
I'm just kidding.
So, yeah.
I trust you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Adam, call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. I last but not least recommend item four point seven, which entails payment in lieu for some of our families for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. He's got picked up for bus stops.
I'll move approval. Second.
Comments or questions? Adam, please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Tversky, I think we're all with you.
Thank you. I will recommend items five point one through five point seven on a consent agenda basis. Five point one is administrative resignation. Five point two is a licensed resignation. Five point three is the elimination of job chair. Five four are licensed teachers. Five five is our administrator substitutes. Five point six are licensed substitute teachers. And five point seven is licensed extracurricular.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items five point one through five point seven.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you. I will recommend items six point one through six point four on a consent agenda basis. Six point one, classified retirement. Congratulations, I got the standard. Six point two, classified personnel changes. Six point three are classified new hires. And six point four is the classified substitute. I really appreciate it.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items six point one through six point four.
Comments or questions? Adam, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you. I will recommend items seven point one through seven point four on a consent agenda basis. Seven point one are licensed supplemental positions for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Seven point two are the non-teaching pupil activity contracts for twenty-four, twenty-five. Seven point three are volunteers for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And seven point four are some changes, corrections and some resignations to some classes for next year.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items seven point one through seven point four.
I'll second.